Is your mic on?
Audience comments, is there anything not on the agenda that someone would like to speak about tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to our business item. And it's a public hearing for the mixed-use pilot program ordinance. Do you want to, if you want to speak?
Yeah, I'll give an overview of the proposal.
Okay.
The mixed-use pilot program is a proposed ordinance that the mayor and my staff has been working on for the past month or so. And we had already been working on an overhaul of the zoning code as a project that was to follow after the unified development code adoption, which was completed in June of this year. However, I think the mayor and others were really excited to get things started on downtown. And when we took our field trip in September, which some of you attended, and then some of you were briefed on after the fact at our September or October council meeting, it seemed like there was a lot of momentum to start seeing some things happen in downtown. And so, the mayor had asked that I focus my effort on moving towards some downtown development regulations that would create a path for some mixed-use development in the downtown, with the intention of getting some additional residents living within walking distance of downtown and stimulating some economic development of the downtown. And so, the city's actually allowed mixed-use development in downtown for going on 20 years. However, in that time, the city hasn't had a single new project come forward that resulted in a true mixed-use type project for a number of reasons. Those include density standards that didn't really meet reality when it came to making a project pencil for a developer, parking requirements that required the construction of underground or parking-type structures, where parking stalls cost $30,000 to $60,000 per parking stall, which is a good way to make a project not economically viable. And then, we also had a design review board process that was risky and unpredictable from the standpoint of the development community. And that was because it had vague and very short standards, which were interpreted by that board. And then, that board had to find its way through a poorly-defined process of design review. And it just did not provide any predictability for developers. So, we've written this pilot program ordinance to be used in conjunction with the proposed design standards, which are also on the agenda for tonight as an introduction item under business item 3C. And we're seeking to remove a lot of the barriers to mixed-use development that we have identified and also to implement our newly-passed 2016 comprehensive plan. And like I said, the main goal is we want to get more people living downtown, which will hopefully create some, a synergy for local businesses. And people who frequent restaurants, more of the, you know, commercial real estate values and rents might start to rise, making, just making things happen downtown. We've labeled the ordinance as a transit-oriented mixed-use development. And that's because, number one, all of the areas that are included in the mixed-use pilot program are within walking distance of downtown. And also because with the presence of the new passenger-only ferry to Seattle and the foot ferry downtown and the, also, you know, the transit hub for our bus service, everybody can walk to a transit hub and connect to different parts of the county and the region. And the other intent of the ordinance is to provide examples of mixed-use development in the city, to demonstrate project viability and to really help us develop our code moving forward and figure out what works and what doesn't work from the developer's standpoint. And then, also to provide examples for other property owners and developers that there is a demand for these types of apartments or condos and that with more people living downtown, the demand for commercial space should increase. So, what is proposed here, there's a, we've established a term for the ordinance where it's proposed that this thing begins on April 2nd, 2018 and ends on June 30th, 2019. And so, applications would be accepted anytime during that window, with the exception that in the first 30 days of the program, there's an initial application window where we'll see how much interest there is in the program. And early in the ordinance, there's a kind of a point where you go down one of two paths. And either you're going to have a competitive selection process because the demand for development under this program is high, or you're going to have a first-come, first-served process because there are fewer applications than there is capacity in the program. And the program is intended right now to allow 200 units of housing and the associated commercial development that would come with that, at which time, the ordinance will terminate. However, 200 isn't the total number of units allowed. It's just the point at which the ordinance will no longer accept future applications. It could actually be up to 250 units as it's now proposed. And we did discuss this at the land use committee meeting this morning. And there was some discussion of possibly increasing or decreasing this number, either to allow for slightly more development under the program or slightly less. The idea being that if you allowed less, it would potentially trigger the competitive process. Or you could allow more because it's really our intent to see this type of development happen downtown and we want to give it a little bit more time to work. So, the planning commission very well may want to weigh in on that. So, the next component of the mixed-use pilot program requires the developers under the program enter into a development agreement with the city. And essentially, and there's a template for a development agreement attached and it's referenced in the ordinance. But essentially, the developer has to provide some sort of benefit to the city in return for certain guarantees from the city. There's got to be an exchange of valuable consideration. And so, under the template agreement, the developer would propose to build certain improvements, whether they're private projects and public amenities, such as sidewalk improvements to connect their project to the pedestrian path or provide shared parking or really provide all of the details of what they're proposing to build. And then, the city is going to allow them to participate in the program and submit building permit applications at a future date and give them a window to prepare all of their final plans and get permits issued and all of the other approvals that they'll need for their project. So, this is not intended to replace the existing regulations. It's really an alternative and a supplement to the existing regulations. It's, you can still apply under the existing downtown overlay district and go through the design review board process if you chose to. And that would allow you to vest your application under those zoning codes. Because this code requires a development agreement, the vested rights, vesting of regulations really doesn't apply here because that's all handled through a development agreement. So, the ordinance details what would be required as far as an initial submittal to participate in the program, which includes things like amassing study and project renderings, as well as narratives addressing how the project complies with the intent of the ordinance, as well as the scoring criteria in the event that the alternative selection, competitive selection process is triggered. And so, all of the application requirements are detailed. And we envision that the initial application would be really a conceptual application. Then, you would negotiate the development agreement. And then, the developer would go forward and produce construction plans and submit for building permits to the city under the terms of a development agreement. The other component of this is the map. And that's something we should talk about in detail. There's only certain properties that are included in the mixed-use pilot program. There's some things that are in the east gateway of the city, the west gateway, and then, kind of the bookends of our core of downtown. And so, one of the things that we saw when we went on our field trip and when we looked at some of the examples of this type of development in Bothell and Burien and Mill Creek, especially Bothell and Burien, was that their old historic downtown was largely left intact. And they really tried to fill in the gaps on the ends of it and adjacent to it to really create a little bit more energy in support of their existing downtown business area. This follows along that same model. And that's not to say that redevelopment might not occur in the future of those core areas. But really, that isn't the intent here. We want to try to add to downtown and enhance it without tearing anything that's existing apart. So, the map also includes, all of the areas have a different number associated with them. And that relates to the height limit that's allowed. And so, there's a mixed-use one, a mixed-use pilot program 1, 2, 3, and 4. And we looked at the topography of downtown in conjunction with our existing regulations, trying not to stray too far from what is currently allowed, which right now, on the north side of Bay Street, you have lower heights than on the south side of Bay Street. And that was to kind of step down to the water and preserve those views. And then, looking at, especially along the Bethel corridor, where you're kind of in a valley, a taller building there isn't going to block anybody's view because the hills and the, you kind of drive up a ravine there on Bethel Avenue with 85 feet of vertical relief between the top of the ravine and the bottom. And so, we felt that the tallest height limit would be appropriate there. The map also designates the location of the Bay Street pedestrian path and the foot ferry terminal. And one of the requirements of the program is that you provide connectivity so that people have accessible, Americans with disability, accessible access to those two facilities so that you can essentially get to the ferry terminal without the use of a car and that it meets that ADA standard. So, finally, on the map, you'll see that there are storefront streets and undesignated streets that are shown. And the purpose there relates to the uses that are allowed under the pilot program. On the storefront streets, it's our intent to ensure that those areas within 40 feet of the right-of-way are occupied by storefront-type uses. So, retail, restaurants, things that are going to have a certain level of activity along the sidewalk. And in other areas, we would allow ground floor residential uses or the other uses, the general uses that are listed in the ordinance. The project, or the program does require that all projects have a mix of uses. And so, all projects have to have at least 10 dwelling units. And then, those ground floor spaces that are on a storefront street have to have a storefront use as well. Parking is something that has been reduced in the ordinance. As I mentioned, to build parking in a garage, it typically costs $30,000 to $60,000 per stall, which when you consider the affordability issues that we face in Kitsap County and throughout the region, that's a huge cost to a developer that they can, that then gets passed on to tenants in the form of rent or a cost to purchase a unit. And so, we would expect that developers are going to provide enough parking to meet the market demand that will allow them to rent, to rent out one of their units. We don't want to force them to provide more parking than is necessary for the project if that means it's going to drive up rents or drive up project costs in a fashion that would kill a project. So, we've done two things. We've reduced the parking standards for residential units to .5 parking stalls per unit. And the idea there is that most residents are gone during business hours and then come home in the evening. And so, that creates an opportunity for parking sharing agreements between other parking lots. I think the chamber did a study that showed 1,000 parking stalls in the vicinity of downtown. And I think most of the time, parking is readily available other than when special events are going on in the downtown. The other thing that we've done with parking is we're not requiring it to be onsite. You can provide your parking in close proximity to the project, which has a couple of benefits. We expect that as more mixed-use development occurs downtown, the demand for parking will decline over time. And so, we don't want people building mixed-use buildings with a lot of parking in them because architecturally, it's not as attractive. And it, that parking can be provided offsite. And if parking demand decreases or declines over time, that parking site may be available for future redevelopment if the standards change or if an alternative solution is worked out. So, if we had a project that was along Bay Street, we wouldn't want to see half of that site being a parking lot or a parking garage. We'd rather see a nice, attractive building that covers the entire frontage. And then, a, you know, a block off of Bay Street, put a parking structure or a parking lot that would provide parking for those residents. So, the final couple of issues in the ordinance are lot coverage and landscaping. And essentially, we're very flexible here. We already allow 100% lot coverage in our downtown. This ordinance continues in that trend and just says that your entire site needs to be covered with either building, you know, manicured, designed landscaping. It needs to be restored to a natural condition where it can be a hardscape-type plaza. So, you need to take care of all of your site one way or another. Leaving a corner with a bunch of blackberries is not going to fly. The other issue we address is weather protection and balconies. And we are encouraging weather protection, so awnings over the sidewalk, as well as allowing balconies to project into the right-of-way. Those types of things are, would be worked out in the development agreement or a contract with the city. And so, the architects can either design those and recess them into the building or they could project out over the sidewalk. I don't think we have a preference one way or another, but it's nice to provide that outdoor space. And then, finally, as I mentioned, we're going to introduce the design guidelines as a separate item tonight. And the intent of this is that any building submitted under this program would have to comply with those guidelines once adopted. We certainly wouldn't want this project to go live in April without the design guidelines being in place. And so, it's important that we finish those and have those in place. If for some reason, there's a delay in that adoption, I would suggest that the council delay the launch of this program until they're ready to go. So, with that said, I think we can do public testimony. And then, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to open up a public hearing for testimony. And I do have a list of people that want to speak. So, we'll cover, we'll take those first and then, then we'll open it up for the rest of you. So, the first person on the list is Steve. And I apologize, I can't read the last name. All right, thank you.
I'm Steve Seago from Port Orchard, business owner downtown. Very anxious to see progress in the development or the opportunity for folks to want to invest in our community and as a business owner in downtown, recognize the need to do that. And I want to share, I submitted earlier written comments that you might have your packet. I agree. I flushed out a couple more points that I wanted to encourage you to consider. First of all, from the standpoint of, as Nick began, pointing out this is intended to be a transportation-focused effort, meaning that somebody who's very involved in the fast ferry project and recognize the value of density where density belongs. When it comes to planning, there's a great value to have the opportunity to encourage and set density where, I'd say only belongs there, but it belongs there better, if you will, when it comes to other infrastructure obligations for any jurisdiction or community. So, it's great to look at it from that perspective. And I think it supports the idea of our local and regional transportation efforts to have more people living downtown Port Orchard. As a business owner, you know, we've worked hard to bring our restaurant downtown back from the place where now it's maybe profitable, but maybe next week it's not. It goes back and forth. Sue Ann knows what that's like. But we, you know, we recognize the value of having customers downtown. I really, I just have calculations and that does make a difference, especially when you're working on the edge to have people who are downtown and part of not just a hospitality restaurant community, but there are other business owners here who find value in that. So, the whole idea of trying to encourage people to come downtown to live in our city is very important. And how you do that is tricky. You know, there's, you can't tell people they have to spend their money in your city and do it your way. You try to create opportunities and send them. I think this proposal does just that with the proper sideboards. And Nick referred to, I'm on the guidelines advisory committee as well, that we're working to create some, some structure to cities to provide certainty that there's not going to be anything run amok. But most importantly, what happens is if people do see opportunity in Port Orchard, want to invest their resources to add to the value of our city, they're going to provide us some guidance. They're going to give us some very valuable information about what people would or wouldn't do or how we would adjust in the future a master plan and approach to downtown. So, it's a very, it's a good opportunity to look at, again, a pilot program to consider how it might contribute to a greater effort to do a master plan for downtown in the future. So, those are my primary points and many others, but we can do that over here at the dock sometimes. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Matt Murphy.
Good evening, my name is Matt. I'm with the Port Orchard Chamber of Commerce. And I've reviewed the document here. And it's interesting that the first six pages are full of the wherethas and wherefores and policies and goals. And there are six pages that this proposed ordinance satisfies. I don't, I think, you know, the assumption is that the goal of the city of Port Orchard for the comprehensive plan is to ensure the housing is affordable and available to all socioeconomic levels of Port Orchard residents. This ordinance deals with that. That there's a minimum residential density requirement, this ordinance deals with that. If you went through all of the wherethas and therefores, I think that the proposal here really moves the dial in an attempt to fulfill the requirements of the comprehensive plan, both on the part of the city, the county, and the state. Many people may not like it, but, you know, the state and the county expect so many people to live within the city limits of Port Orchard as defined now and in the future. And there's no way around that. You can always say, "Not in my backyard." But the reality is, is that somebody is going to shove them in your backyard, whether you like it or not. I think a plan like this helps to define where that growth will take place. Nick mentioned the parking study we did. You know, our parking study ran from West Bay to Cheers. It was, I think it was 946. So, and that doesn't include heading up Bethel that direction. That was, that, those parameters in one block up, so it included Prospect. There's lots of parking down here. If you take a look at it, there are people down here already. I think, I think the numbers were somewhere in the neighborhood of 14,000 people a month use the library. There's 900 employees at the courthouse. You've got the foot ferry that's coming and going. You've got the bus, the transit hub down here in Port Orchard. 13,000 cars a day drive through Bay Street. So, there's people already down here. And we need to figure out how to capture them. If we can provide them a place to live here where they shop and, you know, they can, they can work in Birmingham, they can work in Seattle. They want to come back here and spend their dollars. That's really what we want. It's only for a year. I'm hoping that in the next 30 days, that Nick is up to his eyeballs in applications. And he's got a lot to choose from. And we can go through a competitive process and we can come up with a good plan to implement all of this. And, you know, like I said, it's just good to see what this plan is. Things are getting done here in the city of Port Orchard. Thank you.
Thank you. So, next is Steve Jarrett. Is Steve here? Oh, you, okay, you don't want to speak? And so, Carol, did you want to speak? Okay. Okay. Howard. Nope, no speaking, okay. How about you, Gary? Do you want to speak?
Yeah.
All right.
I want to listen to you. Gary Anderson, Los Angeles, 635. Well, there's a Russian.
I can call him up.
Sure. I don't really, this is important. Well, we're telling us. How's that? Better? I'm very encouraged by this proposal. And I hope the planning commission, I think it's the planning commission for considering this proposal. The city of Port Orchard has far too long been waiting for development to decide to do something in the city without the city doing something proactive to make it, give them a compelling reason to do something in the city of Port Orchard. This is a proposal that gives developers and property owners a reason why they should develop their property and spend their hard-earned dollars to enhance their property in the city of Port Orchard to help Port Orchard become something. We all want Port Orchard to become something better, but we have not had something in front of us that gives that a reason. And I applaud the mayor and the planning staff to make this proposal available to you. And I sincerely hope to give serious consideration and make a recommendation to the city council to give this full weight of authority to move forward on this project. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Gary Harris. And I'm probably the only negative person in the audience that appears. I'm a little bit upset because we went through this with the downtown overlay district probably a little over 10 years ago. And that's why I attend most of the council meetings. The people on the Hill haven't even been told about this issue. We didn't know that, at least I assumed from what Littleman did before I came down, that there was a committee probably made up of some of these gentlemen here, like the transit committee was made up of a special group of pro people and no negative people on it. I really am upset that, first of all, half of a parking space, our transit system is not up to being able to handle that. So, it'll be like in Ballard. No place to park here so that they will be parking on the streets where the people in Ballard don't have a place to park there and have to walk distances. It's clear that there are people that want this very, very much. And, but I think everybody should have some input. And it hasn't been that way. And I know that you've had your planning commission meetings and very little, you know, participation by people. And it's said that people know that this is happening, but people don't know this is happening. And I think something needs to be done to bring more people in before it evolves down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, my name is Robert Baglio. How are you guys doing?
Good.
Good.
But I'm a business owner in town, lived in town for a handful of years. Port Orchard, you know, needs a little help. We've seen it kind of deteriorate the last few years. And you look at Silverdale, you look at Birmingham, you look at Paul's Place, you look at Big Harbor. You know, you track through that, there's a lot of energy going on there. There's a lot of activity. Port Orchard needs a little help. It needs a catalyst. I think this is the catalyst that's needed to go ahead and hopefully get some things going. You know, like I said, I'm a business owner. I have multiple businesses or properties here. I've invested in the city. And, you know, I think Port Orchard, it's time for Port Orchard to kind of come into its own. It's kind of the, I don't know how to say it, the ugly stepchild, but it's an area that I think, you know, needs a little help. And like I said, I think this is really a step in the right direction. I would like to applaud the mayor, as well as Nick and the leadership to go ahead and move forward with this. And I support it wholeheartedly. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Ken Cambridge, I'm also a business owner in town. I don't often do this, but I would like to agree with everything Mr. Baglio just said. I think it's a great proposal. The mayor should commend this, Nick should commend it. I went on a tour of some of the areas that have undertaken some things like this. And the first stop was Befrian and then White Center and then High Point. Those are all areas that I grew up in, not areas that you're proud to tell people you grew up from. But the areas have significantly changed now. They're really, really cool. And as my kids grow up, and when we go back for reunions in Burien, there's now a place to go. And people are excited about being from Burien now, really, that sort of. And it would be great if my kids came home from college and could come and get together with their South kids and people and have a place to go to and meet. And I think, I think we're on to something here. I think it wouldn't be bad if you were like Ballard back then. But maybe it wasn't the crumbly last in the day, but it's now a common, I think, to really on the verge of something really substantial here.
Can you tell me what your name was again?
Ken Cambridge.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Come on. Come on.
I'm Dave Jeffco, and I have a, I own a building downtown, I work downtown, Kitsap Bank for, I've been down for the last 20 years, I've been there. And I've owned my building downtown Port Orchard for about four years. I live above my building, so, in downtown Port Orchard. And I really love living down here, and I'd love to have some neighbors to look down there. And I don't do this for a lot, I'll be both these guys. But I think it's a good project, it's a good start, and we need to do something downtown to revitalize it, and I think it's a good step. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Ryan Hayder, I own Hayder Communications in town here, and my wife and I moved to Port Orchard 17 years ago from West Seattle because we really saw the potential here. And we stayed because of our friends. And we haven't seen a lot of progress as far as development and new amenities. And I just, I travel a lot, I take photos in all these towns I go to of just what they're doing to make it exciting and lively, and I see this as an absolute solution that we're missing. And I just, I just want to reinforce that, I think, is bringing people downtown together and creating a hub and finding the soul of this town can make a huge difference, and I hope we have issues with transit and parking, that's something we need to plan for. As a marketer, I want to make this place a destination. I don't want to make it just a place to live, I want to make it a place that people are coming to rather than all of us are going elsewhere. And this is a great first step to achieve that.
Thank you.
My name is Courtney Haydock, I also have a business downtown. And as many of you know, I was previously the executive director for Porter to Timber, and is my successor. And I know how businesses struggle downtown, and until we have a little higher density of residences, it's going to be very difficult for anyone highly successful. And I just want to reassure you that anything I and Steve Seago do is for the betterment of Port Orchard. It's the reason we took over a restaurant and operated, not to make money off of it, but because we want Port Orchard to succeed. So I also support this and hope to move forward with it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ann Marie Baglio. I moved here in 1994 from Portland, Oregon. I thought I lived in a beautiful area there, and came here, and it's absolutely stunning. I got my real estate license shortly after I moved here. I have been doing that for about 23 years now. And I think what's always amazing is when I bring people through, and I mean bring people through downtown, they're always expecting just a little bit more. And they're not, they're getting it. Most of them are staying, some of them have moved on, but I think that this is a fabulous, fabulous plan, and I'm sharing it with all my clients, so hopefully you're in with me.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do you guys have any questions or comments?
The only question I had was about the, it was kind of confusing to me that the two routes, that, can you explain a little bit more about that? Because I'm not, I guess, understanding why you would want to limit the projects that could come into downtown if that's what we're asking for, that's what we're seeking.
Well, I guess, part of the reason that we're writing this ordinance is to get examples of projects and to help inform the creation of future permanent regulations. And so if we just wanted to change the regulations and have this be the standard, we could do that, but it's, it's really set up to be something temporary, and we're not sure how much interest there's going to be in actually submitting applications for development. So, in the, given that we wanted to set an initial limit to how many units of housing could come in under this program, we needed to figure out what to do if there's more demand than there is capacity. And you could do that as a first-come, first-served type of proposition, where if you get in the door, you get your project approved. But I think if there's going to be that level of demand, we want to make sure that we get good examples, and the best examples possible. And so that's why we created the competitive process, so that this can be as successful as possible. But we're not even sure that we're going to have that level of demand to warrant the competitive process. And so in that case, we would just have a first-come, first-served basis, just to get an example, as opposed to having to choose between six or seven.
Nick, were the residents of downtown made aware of tonight's meeting and this proposal?
Yeah, we sent out public notice, we put it out on Facebook through the city's webpage, and I believe the Independent did an article about it last week.
Friday. There was a front-page article about this very meeting and the process.
Now, what about a postcard, like the city used to do, to residents within 300 feet?
We, we do that for specific project applications, and so when a project actually comes in, it'll be subject to environmental review and SEPA. And so then we send out a postcard informing somebody of a specific project, and then they have the ability to comment on that project. So we typically, on legislative proposals, we don't do direct mailings, you know, at all.
I, I asked because I was on the planning commission when we first started coming up with the downtown overlay district standards, and there was a great deal of public input, primarily from the residences, the folks that live here on the hill, as Jerry mentions. And I think it would be very important to get their input as well. I mean, I'm a huge supporter of the pilot project, but some of the locations may not be ideal, especially if you live down here, and it would be nice to get more public input on that. My opinion.
But you were saying that if there were an actual application to redevelop a site, then postcards would be sent out to the residents, and they would have an opportunity to weigh in?
Correct. And depending where the, on where the site is within the pilot program area, some of the sites are actually subject to the Shoreline Management Act. And so if, for instance, West Bay were to redevelop, which is included in the area, you would actually have a public hearing on that proposal in addition to the SEPA notices, whereas a site that's not in the shoreline is still going to have a notice of application sent out, and you're going to perform environmental review on that and take comments from anyone who's concerned, and potentially address that through mitigating measures under SEPA or through, you know, through some other process. I also believe that the development agreement required under this has to have a hearing as well, and so there will be a hearing at council on any development agreement unless it's proposed in conjunction with something going to the hearing examiner, in which case the hearing would be at the hearing examiner, where he would make a recommendation to the council for approval.
Well, for example, this parcel here, slated, as I see, to allow for five stories, is that correct?
Which is, the current zoning allows five stories.
The current one?
Yes.
Yeah, you're allowed...
Through the DOD process allows five stories on the south side of Bay Street, and three stories on the north side.
Okay.
Correct. And the reason that it's changed from what is in the code now is 55 to 58, is when we started looking at individual sites and the grade change between the front property line and the back property line, we have sites in town where if you're going to have an entrance on the upper street and the lower street, the grade separation is going to require an 18-foot first floor, so you're going to have really high ceilings on that ground floor, and then you're going to have 10-foot floors above that. And so we wanted to make sure that there's that flexibility to make sure that the second floor entrance is at street grade, and that you can still get that, that same number of stories. I wouldn't expect that all five-story buildings are going to be 58 feet. I think that some of them are probably going to be 53 feet, but that's something that has to be worked out in a design process, and we don't want to, we don't want our regulations to kill a project because suddenly they can't get the additional floor, which is typically where you're going to get the highest rents and actually pay for a project and make it viable. We felt right now, the way that our ordinance is set up, you have to get a conditional use permit to have that height, and then there's, you have to provide special amenities, and it's, it's a very complex process that I think most people aren't even willing to attempt.
Okay. So this parcel here, that example, five stories currently allowed. I think this appears to be roughly Kitsap Bank also marked on here, which then by current DOD standards would only be allowed three stories, but is being proposed for four, is that correct?
So it is allowed 39 feet, which is interesting because that is a flat site, and 39 feet is either a really tall three-story building, or you're going to have a very short, you know, one of the, one of the floors is going to be squished in there. And so it seemed to us that making it a true four-story building is closer to what the height is now, it's just that the height squeezes everything together.
So it'll go from 39 to 48 feet?
Correct.
I guess I bring this up because I remember these height allowances downtown was weighed heavy on a lot of people's minds.
Yeah. We should add that anything, any of the properties that require a shoreline permit, which most of the property north of Bay Street does, I think the Kitsap Bank property requires a shoreline permit, as does the, the old swim deck, Scully, Scully Marine. And in the Shoreline Management Act, there's a statutory limit of 35 feet, and it's not, it's not that the regulation says that it's 35 feet, but once a building is over 35 feet, you have to address view issues related to adjacent development. And so those shoreline properties, there is an opportunity to address height concerns in the hearing, and it's backed in state law.
And if it does have to go through the shoreline, does it go to the public? Forgive me, I missed part of the conversation. Does it go to the hearings examiner, or does the public actually have the opportunity to provide input here?
No, it's a quasi-judicial hearing before the hearing examiner, and so the hearing examiner is going to look at the shoreline regulations and determine whether or not the proposal complies with those regulations. And so it's a shoreline substantial development permit, and potentially a shoreline variance or a conditional use permit, depending on the nature of the proposal.
So therefore, residents wouldn't have the opportunity to weigh in?
No, they, they get to testify to the hearing examiner, but the hearing examiner is evaluating this based on the facts of the proposal in relationship to our written code. And so unless you're, there's also the potential, you know, under SEPA, we're going to issue a SEPA decision before anything goes to hearing. And that decision is either going to be a determination of nonsignificance, a mitigated determination of nonsignificance, or we would issue a determination of significance and require an environmental impact statement. Anyone from the public could appeal that SEPA decision, and the appeal of SEPA would be heard concurrently with the shoreline permit at the hearing examiner. So you can, you can, you could potentially argue against a project as an appeal of SEPA, or because it doesn't comply with the shoreline master program, or because it doesn't comply with the zoning regulations, which are evaluated in conjunction with the shoreline master
I guess I'm trying to understand if the, all those people that came before the planning commissioner 10-plus years ago to discuss heights downtown, if they would, if their voices would be heard? If, if it's going to a hearings examiner, which is typically, I believe, held during the middle of the day, workday?
Yeah, typically, hearing, public hearings at the hearing examiner are heard during the middle of the day.
They can take written...
But, but we take written.
Written testimony or verbal testimony. There is a process for the public to be heard. And it was purposeful to leave the downtown core alone, because we felt that that was an area that we didn't want part of this process.
Right, and I understand that, I appreciate it, which brings me, I guess, to, and the other property, the one, Bay Street Bistro sits in it right now, but that's part of the downtown core between...
It's just, just east of it. So it's not that parcel, but it's east of it around the corner. It's not the Bistro property.
Yeah, it's where the billboard is.
Thank you, thank you.
Where the billboard is to the roofing company.
Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it.
Well, that's what I look at when I look at this map. I look at, it seems that, to me, that some care was taken to look at properties where heights and views and things, impacts like that would not be as much of an issue as it is in, in the downtown, you know, those three blocks or whatever downtown. Appears to me that most of these places are backed by slopes, fairly steep slopes. It seems like there was care taken, because that's what you guys did, right?
Yeah, and that's why the height limits are both a, a numerical height limit of, you know, 37, 48, 58 feet, and a number of stories. And that was because if you had a sloping site, we didn't want you to put all the height at the top of the hill. It's because five stories from the bottom, from the foot of the hill is going to be sometimes at grade with the back of the lot. Specifically, Area 1, area, the MUPP Zone 1, which is between Bay Street and Perry, that area currently has a 15-foot height limit as measured from the uphill grade, which is exactly the same as what we've allowed here. Really what's changing here is the parking and some of the other development standards related to reviewing a project in that area. Like we said, the Area 2, it's a nine-foot difference, but it's still limited to a number of stories, and so presumably you could see a four-story building under the current regulations. This is going to be a four-story building with higher ceilings than what would be required under the current code. The, the mixed-use 3-zone on the south side of Bay is consistent with what's already allowed, it's within, well, it's three feet higher than what's allowed, but it, it deals with the topographic issues. And if you look at the site that you mentioned next to the Bistro and going up towards Ty Charlie's, all of the houses behind those properties are a good 45 to 55 feet above Bay Street. As are, if you go down to Klein and Dwight, there's, I think, 35 or 40 feet of vertical relief between the bottom northwest corner at DeKalb and the Klein and Dwight intersection. That's a really steep hill. And so a five-story building there is only going to be, you know, five to 10 feet above the uphill grade, and so it's, it's pretty much like having a house at the top of the hill in terms of the view impact. So we've, we've tried to take really good care, and honestly, this map has been revised, I don't know, 15 times in the last 35 days as we've continued massaging it, and we've had people come in and ask questions and point out different things to us, and so we think we've got a pretty refined map proposal here.
Nick, could you refresh my memory, where in this document it, it talked about what is defined as the downtown core? I know I read it in here earlier, but...
Well, the...
Then the, from what street to what street?
The downtown core in our current code...
Oh, in this.
Well, it's not defined in this, it's just defined based on what's on the map. So the...
I thought I read it somewhere in here. Ah, there it is, from Frederick to Harrison, thank you.
What section is it?
On page 5, the fourth whereas.
Oh, oh, oh.
And I think that's what threw me, is because within, between Frederick and Harrison is that one hashed square.
Right, the billboard one.
This one lies between Frederick and Harrison, so that's what kind of threw me.
I guess that one lot that you suggested, that you thought was the Bistro, is currently vacant, and so that's why it's included. We weren't, we weren't looking to redevelop the existing buildings in the downtown core, we were simply looking to either develop vacant properties or underdeveloped properties that are tangential to our downtown core.
Nick, can I ask you something?
Yes.
My understanding with the pilot program was to show people in the community what can happen with development we have and what it could become in the future. I, one of my, my property that I own is also in here, and the reason I'm not concerned about it, because, one, I'm not selling it to anyone, and two, I mean, I thought this was supposed to be kind of like a visual tool. Am I right on that?
Yeah, I think, I think we need sort of a proof of concept of mixed-use development in Port Orchard. Nobody has dared to build a project like this in the city, and so I think there's a lot of people that would like to see that, number one, it fills up and people have a, there's a demand to rent the units, and that, two, there's a demand for the... And that, two, there's a demand for the commercial space, which I think the commercial demand is much lower than the residential demand right now. And so, you really have to have more people living downtown to support our existing commercial space, much less the new commercial space. And so, the residential units are going to have to, you know, subsidize the commercial space for a period of years until there's that critical mass of people to, to-
I think it's a big misconception. I don't think a lot of people are understanding that it's going to be used as a tool to show everyone what, what the future could be, what the development that's happening throughout all of the Washington.
Yeah.
I think if people understood more that it's a visual aid, it doesn't mean it's happening. I'm not selling my property tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, and I would, I would add to that, that, you know, we've set a cap on this at 200 units, which realistically is three to four projects. And so, there's 20-plus parcels of property in here, and we're talking about three to four projects. So, it's not like the entire map is going to develop under this standard. It's that where it's viable, a few of these sites may change. And, you know, I, I would expect that a 10,000-square-foot lot, if you look at some of the examples we've seen as we've studied this issue, you're probably going to get 30 to 40 residential units on a 10,000-square-foot lot, assuming a five-story building. And you're going to get, you know, potentially up to 10,000 square feet of commercial area. And so, you know, you get four of those projects, you're at 160. If West Bay were to redevelop, that's a much bigger site. I mean, you could, you could potentially use up the entire quota in this program on that one site if it was designed properly and if they can figure out how to park it. So, I think this shouldn't be evaluated as this entire area is going to develop right now under this program. It's just, you know, it's a couple of projects in that larger area.
Nick, why is it that it's always the downtown that's going to save Port Orchard? I mean, we are, we have a huge city limits now. And if our transit system is so effective, I mean, you could, you could build outs, you know, outside of the downtown and still, right, get to the ferries and it's just, just a question.
I think, well, it's a complex and open-ended question, but I'll, I'll try to give you my thoughts on that. I think, first of all, topography plays a big role. The fact that our transit hub is at the bottom of a pretty sizable hill means that a majority of the population probably doesn't want to walk, hike, or bike from downtown to another part of the city where they live. And so, that means that they would be driving downtown. And when you talk about the cost of parking, it's very high. And so, that's not, that would require huge subsidies from the city to provide parking facilities for people wanting to get to Seattle or to get to the shipyard or to a job in Bremerton. I think the other issue here is one of changing demographics. And I think if you look at people my age and younger, which no generation seems to want me, I'm either an ex or a millennial, depending on who you ask. But certainly, the millennials are not owning cars the same way that previous generations have. And I think part of it is the cost of living has gone up. Part of it is how millennials are choosing to spend their money on experiences rather than on things. I think younger people are delaying having families, and they're looking for a lifestyle that allows them to live without a car so that they can spend their money on other things that they care about, whether it's travel or going out to eat. And so, Port Orchard does not have much of any place for somebody in the millennial generation, you know, where, where they're attracted to live. They want to live in downtown Bremerton or Ballard or somewhere else. And so, we, the only young people that are moving here are the ones that are starting a family or that are priced out of other markets that, or, or that have roots here and just refuse to, to leave. So, I think that we're missing out on a piece of the puzzle here by not having young people who, who want this type of lifestyle. I think that there's probably also older folks that are empty nesters that are, would be dying to move into a place like this because they don't have kids in the house anymore. And it's, you know, living alone at McCormick Woods or somewhere else maybe doesn't have as much to offer as living downtown would. But there aren't many options downtown that don't involve living in a 100-year-old house that has all kinds of maintenance challenges that both the mayor and I are aware of because we're in that situation.
I think there's probably only four places in our city that can accommodate the, the type of density that we're talking, that the Growth Management Act dictates that we'll have in our city. And it's, there's a small pocket of it at the McCormick North. It's going to be multifamily out by Bravo Terrace. And I think our designs, our corridor study that we're going through on Bethel is probably going to drive it from what we were traditionally looking at in big box development. It's probably going to be more service-oriented, commercial development and mixed-use potentially, or multifamily on, on the backside of it. We won't, we're not done with that process, but I can see that. And really, our downtown. And our downtown has access to the ferry, the fast ferry, and that job market in, in King County. And the housing costs over there are driving people out of there into Bremerton and the projects that they have there. I could very, I, I think there's a demand for what we're proposing.
I just, it, I think the main question is, is if this is a transit-driven pilot program, does the buses, do they only run downtown?
It's tran-
I mean, because they, they, when you talk about people don't want to get off the bus down here and then walk up the hills, I mean, shouldn't we make sure that the transit system is, is our partner with this so that it, it covers more of the Port Orchard area?
It's referred to as a transit-oriented development, and it's referring to the transit hub and the ferry terminal. And Bremerton has a similar ordinance within so many feet of the ferry terminal. They've relaxed the parking standards so that you're walking from your apartment or condominium to the, to the ferry terminal, the transit hub.
Does anybody want to have any more questions or want to make a recommendation?
Well, I'll make a, a motion. And my motion would be to approve the ordinance. I move that the planning commission recommend to the city council that the mixed-use pilot program ordinance be approved as presented.
Okay. And can I clarify? I think there, we handed out a version that had a couple of typos corrected. And so, that was before you, I just wanted to make sure that that's-
That's the one that was at our desk when we got here?
Correct.
Yeah, that's the one I've been using tonight. And that's the one that I would ask to be approved.
That's also the one that was on the table for the public to, to view.
Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of those oppose? One? And just to put this straight is I think, I'm for this too. I think it's a great thing. I just, it's just always about the downtown, though. I, I would like to see that we look at other parts of the city too on projects. So... So, we're at business item C, the introduction of the draft design standards?
Yes, so, the design standards, we mentioned these as part of the mixed-use pilot program. We hired Makers Architecture and Urban Design earlier this year to do, to prepare this document for the city. And so, we've had a couple of committee meetings, and we've gone back and forth with staff and their technical staff. And so, we wanted to release our initial public draft of the document to you. I'm not going to get into the details of the proposal tonight. We're going to have a consultant coming in December to present to the planning commission and to give you an overview of how the guidelines work and what the intended outcomes are and why each of the standards contained in the guidelines is written the way that it is. And there's, there's a handful of decision points that are, are things that we still need to determine. But I think that this is far enough along for you at least to give it a cursory read-through. And then, I think when you see the presentation in December, a lot of this will start to make sense and it may trigger some additional questions. Our goal would be to have a hearing on this in January, assuming that we can get everything put together in time. And so, December is really your opportunity to study this and ask some, some good questions and have your, your concerns addressed. And I think-
There's also a, a open house on this subject matter, December 15th, here in the council chambers. And I'd encourage-
November, November 15th at 6:00 P.M.
Excuse me, November 15th, I'm sorry. It's next, next week, next Wednesday. So, it'd be helpful if you guys came and interacted with the public and got people's spots.
At 6 o'clock. And so, if, if you're going to come, we need you to notify the clerk because we would have to issue a notice of a quorum in the event that we have a, you know, I guess, was it four or more planning commissioners and three or more council members. So, please let us know if you plan to attend. But I think that'll also be really informative and also will provide us with some input from the public to help further shape this document.
Now, this is a very, this is the other piece where with the, with the pilot project, we're relaxing some standards. But we need, we very much recognize that our design, we don't have any design standards. We need better standards so that we can get quality projects. So, this is an important piece, other piece, because they have, these two, two things need to move forward together. Because one doesn't work without the other.
Any questions? You guys have any questions?
I do know.
No.
Do you have anything else on that? Okay, so, approval of the minutes from October 3rd. I move to a program as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Done. All right, adjourned. Thank you, guys.
It was in, it was last week's paper, it was- Jerry, I, I find that comment offensive.